Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, August 24th, 2015. We'll call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager, and in consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. If we have any citizen comments this evening, please come down, name an address for the record.
My name is Bill Cohn. I live at 2427 Fourteenth Street in Lewiston, and I'm a member of the Lewiston Library Board, just recently joined with them in the last couple of months. And before that, I was on the Library Foundation for a whole number of years, probably seven or eight years. Thank you for your past support of the library. We hope that you will continue that support by maintaining the $500,000 budget appropriation to finish the second floor of the library. The library is flourishing. It provides great services, more than just books. They do have a lot of books down there, but they have technology and programming. Additionally, it's a place for ideas, creativity, and community. It's exciting to consider the potential for the future. I've lived in Lewiston most of my life and have seen the downtown, I think, in its lowest, and in the last several years, it's really coming alive. The downtown area, much more active, and I can't help but believe that our library isn't a major contributor to that dynamic change. Finishing the second floor and expanding the library's reach is a great investment in Lewiston. As the library grows, the downtown and downtown develops, I think we all win. Thank you for your support of the library, and thanks for your public service.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Coleman, I live at 307 Preston Avenue. I'm a member of the Lewiston Library Foundation, and here to thank you for your support of the foundation and hope that it goes through tonight with tonight's budget finalization. But more than even being on the foundation as a small business owner with Coleman Oil Company, I can't tell you how important the library has been to recent recruiting and even retention of the employees, both from people that come from other cities, but the kids that have grown up here in, I say kids because they're younger than me, in Lewiston, but who are employed with us, and retaining them. The younger, our younger generation of employees know that the library does mean much more than books, and the second floor in particular, in addition to the expansion, having that event space possibility available to us, brings many of those programs beyond the books to our community. And on a completely different avenue, I am also the coordinator for the Federated Church, Presbyterian Federated Church for Family Promise, and I can tell you right now, the families that we serve that are homeless, and we're helping them to get back on their feet and be self-sufficient, that library has been a lifesaver to them. Our program is on Normal Hill, and for them to be able to go down and use those computers to find jobs, to help their children do homework, is invaluable. So again, I also thank you for your support.
Thank you.
My name is Helena Labaff. This is Tristan Smalley and Jonah Smalley, and we all live at 347 West Reservoir Drive in Lewiston. And I brought these two people with me because they are, like I am, library users and patrons, and they both have their library card. Do you have it on you, Jonah? Show me your library card. There you are. And they've enjoyed, they've enjoyed this library so much, all the activities, and so we're here to thank you for that. Thank you for making that investment in us, in all of us in Lewiston. We also want to ask that you keep the amount of money in the budget so that the second floor can be filled. We, there's a wonderful area for children, there's a wonderful area for teens, but some of the meeting rooms and perhaps make rooms that would be on the second floor would be really beneficial to the adults, so we thank you.
Thank you.
I should know better than to try and follow kids. Marcia Banta, 335 Serenka Court, President of the Lewiston Library Association. I know you haven't taken the vote yet tonight, but really, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, seeing beyond the building and understanding that the library is going to build the city of Lewiston. It's a community builder. And thank you for your partnership with the Lewiston Library Foundation and our community donors and businesses that put together the building and that we believe and I think you believe will build the future of Lewiston. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Surf Drive. Yes, we do have a new library, and I keep hearing the Library Board thanking you, the city council, but I get to hear anybody thanking the taxpayers that have funded this thing since this thing never did quite pass the mustard. We infused about a half million dollars in the library budget a few years ago, and I think the taxpayers have, you know, done a good job of getting this library up and running, you know. And I think now, I think I've yet to ever see the Library Foundation come up with any kind of dollar amount that they have that they're willing to put in this thing. And I think it's up to them to come forward with the money this time instead of the taxpayers. You know, it's, it is a great place, but it wasn't exactly the greatest building in the city of Lewiston. We definitely paid a premium for that building. I mean, that's why it sat empty for so many years because nobody in the private business sector was about to buy that thing. But I think we did. I think the taxpayers met their obligation by finishing this library, and it, you know, nice place. I read a lot of books out of there. But I said, as far as the fluffing stuff on the second floor, I think the Library Board needs to step up and let them fund it out of this so-called whatever money they have that nobody seems to know about. But that's all I got to say about that. But anyway, once again, I'm sure it'll fall on deaf ears, but as far as this, you know, pay-to-drive-to-work deal, I'm sure that gas allowance certainly isn't going away, or the cellphone issue. I've yet to hear any of you council people talk about that. I guess money just grows on trees, and obviously, I think you're more concerned about representing city employees than you are the taxpayers of this town. So, I don't know. It's about all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Gary Bush, 912 Eighteenth Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have in front of you a photograph that is a rare photograph, and this is one of your budget items. The budget item is a line item that talks about spending money for downtown development and an inventory of sidewalk vaults. This shows about 1890 that the store owners put their own sidewalks in, which were wood, and they had vaults at that time, prior to Main Street. Those vaults are really essential to understanding some of our history. This is in front of the kitten ball across from the Lewis-Clark Plaza. The manhole covers are not manhole covers, but they're coal chutes, and those have been distinguished as works of art now, all the different types of manhole covers that they used, and we have those in Lewiston. So I come before you to ask you to consider leaving that item in because we have vaults that are used and historically have been used since 1896 by the owners of the building. BoJack's currently uses under the sidewalk, and that building is 1896, and that use under the sidewalk has been continuous for over 100 years. This photograph that you're seeing is a photograph under Fifth and Main Town Square. And before you, we have many proposals considering how to take care of those sidewalk vaults. It will come up for a vote, but before the vote comes up, we have to consider that we have to know where those vaults are. This vault has been retrofitted with steel to support it, and it is now still being used for storage and used by the building owner, and yet it sits underneath the public sidewalk. This is safe and engineered, and so it will last a long time and preserve the history. I want to take just a brief second to show you a photograph of something that's very historic. This building is the Liberty Theater, which dates back 100 years, and in front of it is our doors and piece of glass on the sidewalk, and we don't exactly know where all of those vaults are in historic downtown. Before any city council can vote on any type of plan for making the sidewalk safe and those vaults safe, we have to have an inventory. On your line item budget, it talks about putting aside money. Now, you can look at it a couple of different ways, and one way I would like you to look at it is the fact that if we don't spend the money for the inventory, it'd be very difficult to put yourself in a position of making hard and fast rules. That inventory can be done, and we've talked about it. I was here in 2010 talking about the sidewalk vaults, but we have a lot of neighbors who are quite willing to help us. Missoula is going through the same process. The city planner in Missoula has sent all the information on how to go about doing it. It just takes the funds to do that. Whether it is this year or next year is not my point. My point is the inventory comes prior to making decisions as far as the city council, in my opinion. And so I would help in any way I can, I volunteer to, to look at the historic implications of our sidewalk vaults, and also, we have state organizations that are quite willing to help. The Idaho Heritage Trust has historical research people that are quite willing to help, and we have major universities. So this is an important part of our downtown heritage. This is an important part of who we are and how our city is viewed, and I hope that this budget item stays in, and whether it's expended this year or next year, or we can plan further. I would hate to see us be penny wise and pound foolish, and it would come back and so on, upon a city council and upon all the divisions within the city. I appreciate this on behalf of those that are very keen on keeping our historic downtown and keeping those areas that we can save. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Gary, back when you were on the city council in 2010, or when you had the discussion about the vaults in 2010, was there talk about a survey that had been done prior to that?
To my knowledge, there was an incomplete ground penetrating radar survey done, and that was not complete because it was contingent upon University of Idaho having the equipment for only a short time. It was volunteer. But this, this discussion's been going on for a long time, and some of them are unsafe, some are in perfectly good shape and beautiful, pristine, and then others we don't know about because we haven't been underneath to see them. And so the discussion's been going back and forth for a long time. But again, I'm asking just that this study, this inventory, which all other towns and cities have gone through, and we have a good matrix of following. Matter of fact, Sacramento did it, and they have all of that online that we could look at. It just takes a little bit of money so that we can be assured that we're looking at everything down, down under the vaults, if I answer your question.
Yes, thank you.
Hopefully, we can keep it rolling and keep going. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Gary, will you hand the mic?
Sure.
Make the mic available, please.
I'll, I'll take your. Also run over the cord. No, I got it. All right. One, Eric Peterson, 904 Seventh Avenue, Lewiston, Idaho. And after hearing Mike Lorenz speak there, I just would remind him that I think the applications for running for council came out yesterday and are available till the fourth. I'm here to thank you folks for tolerating me putting up with an issue that's very important. I've learned an immense amount about the budgeting process, starting with the sausage underneath and finding out all these little different things, and like finding out amazingly in the last meeting, the great idea that you can actually fund the money and delay it so that you have time to talk about the issues and everything else. If I had known about that one from the beginning, that would have been great because that's the best idea that there ever was on the issues we're talking about. I think the city manager has some good information on evidentiary issues that'll come up later, but I do want to thank you and see, I actually can be nice.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do we have any other citizen comments?
Too steep to go up forward.
Well, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read consent agenda, which is rather light this evening.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the maintenance of the August 10th, 2015 regular meeting and approving the vouchers payable dated July 31st through August 13th, 2015, in the amount of $1,341,436.51.
Okay, councilors, the consent agenda's been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to the active agenda. First up is ordinance 4642, possible third reading and adoption. This is amending ordinance number 4612, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston in the sum of $3,407,030. Entertain a motion to, and this is going to be roll call. Counsel?
Only on the adoption, not for the third.
Okay, okay. So entertain a motion to read for the third time, ordinance 4642.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4642 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending ordinance number 4612, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho, in the sum of $3,407,030 and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4642's been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4642 by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counselor Collins.
Aye.
Counselor Randall.
Aye.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4642 has been passed. Next up, ordinance 4640, possible third reading and adoption. This is to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance, appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2015, and ending September 30th, 2016. I will entertain a motion to read for the third time, ordinance 4640.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Start with Counsel Randall.
I'd like to make an amendment to take $100,000 off of the library appropriation to be put onto the new fire station appropriation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Randall.
Well, frankly, I've been really disappointed in the lack of support for the fire station. And I really think that fire station deserves a lot more respect and consideration than it has received in light of everybody's very willing to support the library when the airport itself brings in $55 million into this community every year, and the library, I'm sure, can't match that. And it also provides a lot of jobs, a lot of livings, and the library can't do that other than city employees. So I'm still going to ask for more money for the fire station, give it another shot at it, anything we can get toward it, because if we don't pay for it now, we're going to pay for it down the line. And if, we may end up having to cut some other city budget, God forbid, if we have to cut the streets again, just so that we can pay for this new fire station. And that's because we didn't want to take the money out from the library and extend the period of time the library would have to wait to get their money. So I'm going to ask for the $100,000 and hope we can get that.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
Sir.
Where are we at on this year's appropriation for the fire station? Are we back to the 500?
No, no, no.
We're at the 400.
Based on the First Amendment that was made during the process, that cut the appropriation for the fire station from $650,000 down to, I believe it was 412.
400.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Right. So that's where we are, is the 400, or is it 400?
It was 400.
It's 400. The 412 was the library. So, yeah, they cut it down from 650 to 400. So the appropriation right now for the fire station is 400 because of the First Amendment that was made to the budget process.
I believe it's 426, Mr. Mayor, after last meeting, last week.
Let's see.
That's right.
You may be right.
It is 426 from last week. That was Counsel Maldonado, took 26 from Recreation Specialist and combined it to fund fire station. That passed seven to zero.
That sounds right.
Thank you, Counsel Maldonado. Well, I certainly appreciate your concerns, Counsel Randall, and I still think the 426 gets us a long ways. I mean, we're three years from probably being built out on that project, so we do have quite a bit of time. So I'm okay with the 426, but yes, certainly.
Yes, we may, we may be that, but if we get the money now set aside, we can start earning interest toward that, and as long as we have that money set aside, we can start earning interest. So we won't have to pay quite out, quite so much later on. It's better to get it now while we can. And I think the same approach was done with the library. Get it, get the money now so that they save money in the long run. Well, I think we can save money in the long run by getting the extra money now for the fire station and using that money to gain interest so we don't have to pay so much at the very end.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Should we do need hands?
Please.
Ayes? Okay. Nays? Motion fails, five to.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Blakely.
I would propose an amendment, and I want to get it on the floor to get a couple other answers, questions answered here. I would propose amendment that we shift the 50,000 that we're allocating to the sidewalk vaults to the fire, to the building of the, of the fire station. I have some questions I'd like to get asked here, and so the reason why I'm making that amendment, and hopefully I get a second so I can ask a few questions.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Discussion.
Laura? Question about the vaults. Could that, if we skillfully craft it, could that become a URA project at some point down the road in the next couple of years? Since the downtown is in the district and rebuilding sidewalks and streets is a, is a, you know, potentially a URA project, could that survey at some point in time be crafted and budgeted up inside URA, possibly?
I think your phrase, "skillfully crafted," is something that we would need to work within, and I say that because the URA works in the public right of way, and their purpose is to put in features and improvements that will facilitate development and job creation and increases in assessed value. Now, shoring up a sidewalk to make it safe and for a public purpose in the right of way would clearly be a qualifying activity, but where it gets a little gray is that one of the beneficiaries of this work is a private party, and that private party is using that property in some instances to generate private revenue, such as BoJack's Kitchen and lease rates for Town Square. So I think we'd really need to sit down and consider how we could work through those issues.
Couple more questions?
Certainly.
So, we saw some pictures of Town Square. Town Square went in and paid for, they didn't ask for city help in shoring up the concrete and the work underneath their projects. Apparently, that was paid by the contractor. They didn't come to the city for help for that.
Correct.
My question is, I could see where URA wanted to make them safe for walking on, but at the same time, though, I don't think it's URA's responsibility to shore them up if they're going to be continually be used by the, by the private sector. So we have that fine line there, but...
One option I could see would be a structural lid. So... So we have the option of filling it, controlled density fill, so it's just a block of concrete. We have an option of a structural cage that could then be renovated into occupiable space, or we have a structural lid. And we would, we would, um, not take any action whatsoever on the void itself. We would just be working on the sidewalk.
So...
I guess I would also like to offer a reason for moving forward the, the project I had requested in the, the budget hearings. Which is, we have to prepare for a rebuild of Main and D Street. And the subject of the sidewalk vaults has to be dealt with in advance to give the people who have buildings adjacent to the vaults an opportunity to consider whether they want to move forward with some kind of improvement based on, you know, their business model, revenue projections, et cetera. Or whether having it filled would be acceptable to them so they wouldn't file a lawsuit to stop a construction project. And if the determination on a part of a private property owner was that, um, you know, "We don't want it. It is city property, but we don't want it. We're not going to use it," then we would build in the cost of dealing with it in our construction project. But we can't rip open a road and have a void there. We have to rip open a road and have a big chunk of concrete to build the road up against, or essentially retaining wall beyond which a private party is using the space.
So have all the legal questions been answered yet as far as who takes responsibility for, say, I'm, I'm, I'm an owner of the business. I own a business. I got this vault. Um, it apparently doesn't seem to be falling into the ground. It's safe to walk over, at least in the owner's perception. And he or she does not want to put a penny into renovation. But as we progress, better by others agreed, we're moving, and this person says, "No. I don't want to put a penny of my money into this. It's your property." The city's position is, "It's your property or it's the city's property?"
The city's position is, "It is our property." And while we have not paid for a formal, um, title search, I have requested information from professionals in the community that, that say, there's every indication based on the original plat lines that the face of the buildings is at the face of the lot, and then anything in between the buildings is public right of way. Okay, so if the parcel line is the face of the building, then the city owns the vault. And all, and our code then says that the adjoining property owner is responsible for, you know, the safety of the sidewalk and not having the panels all, you know, cattywampus and clearing it of snow and all the rest of it. But the rub gets, um, the rub is when we come forward with a construction project and there's going to be this disagreement. So we need to sort through all of that in advance so the private property owners have that opportunity to make their own choice about fill or shore up or allow the city to move forward.
And none of this fifty thousand dollars will go towards any of those fees?
No, that's, that's a, a public information campaign that we can't even start until we know the facts. And the facts would be the survey and some prototypical solutions with cost estimates, and then allow people to kind of consider this. It's like when the city council, here we are in August, and you're talking about, uh, funding things for the next year and a half. Well, a private business owner is going to need at least that much time, if not a couple. So let's say we're at three years or four years, and we need to know how to design the reconstruction, and we need to know what elements are included and what it's going to cost, and then put our funding together. There's really an issue that needs to be addressed.
My last question would be, calendar-wise fiscal, when do you think you'd be coming to the city council for a rebuild of downtown? Maybe that's Mr. Davies. Maybe that's, maybe that goes out to Mr. Davies. Sorry, how are you? When would you think you'd be talking about budgeting a rebuild of downtown? The road, the street, the highway? Everything? I want to make sure the left and right hand are talking here to get with each other.
I'm going to take Mr. Davies off the hook.
Okay.
Um, I think that kind of a decision is one best left to the council. When you have your annual meeting in February to talk about, what are your priorities for the year? That's the time, time to start talking about, uh, you know, is that a priority project? Is that something you want to get done? And you communicate that to us and to Mr. Davies, and then he can start planning for that and putting it into his work program.
Well, as of right now, we, we have, we've, we have no future money funded at all towards this project.
Well, we have money that's, that's set aside for, um, just street projects in general. And every year we make a decision as to what street that particular money is going to be used to fund, along with other funds that we may have available from URA or other, uh, partners who might help us with the bill of a particular piece of infrastructure. Chris.
Mayor, city council, city manager. It's true, you set the priorities. I can tell you the last time we looked at it from a budgeting standpoint, we were looking at fourteen million dollars. Now, that included new pavement, new, um, water sewer, taking care of storm drainage, um, an estimate for all the vaults and sidewalks. So, I mean, it was a, it's a huge project that you're considering. So it depends on where you want to go with it. If you want to look at the URA helping, if you want to look at businesses helping, if you want to look at, you know, funding, different, obviously different funding sources because you have the utilities that are part of that, um, project. But again, right at this point, um, there are no specific dollars set aside to do any downtown project. Laura's correct. Until a decision is made, um, on what we're going to do with these vaults and how it's going to be handled, we really can't move forward with the design of what's going to happen with downtown.
Okay. And that would be, I mean, it's not even on the MPO's radar, is it?
It's on the long-range transportation.
Well, but long range. Okay, Counsel Daniel.
So I, I know we make the final call, but it's usually based on the advice of, um, people like Chris Davies. So where do you place it in the list of priorities? Is it more important than Brighton Ave? Is it, um, we have a lot of streets and things we need to rebuild. So where do you place it as far as importance?
You know, that's what we go through every year when we look at our transportation plan, and which we just started to advertise again for the next fiscal years, for, actually for the next five years, so where we're going to put these things. It can change, priorities can change because of either issues such as if you look at like Ninth Street, great. If it started to crumble, obviously that's going to move up in a higher priority. If you start looking at Brighton and what happens up there, if development took off up there, then, you know, in the years to come, that would not have the ability to move the traffic that needed to be done. But we try to prioritize them, you know, through the MPO process and through the local process. I'd have to go back and look at our plan specifically of where it's sitting right now. I, I don't have that at my fingertips, so...
I guess the, the, uh, my observation or comment would be that realistically, without any plan on vaults, from what I'm hearing you say, and I mean, just looking at it from having worked for a contractor, there really is no point in doing any design work for Main Street without tackling this first step.
Well, I mean, you can do the design work. I mean, you can look at several options. You're going to spend more money doing that design work based on, again, we don't have a complete inventory of what those vaults look like. You have everything from the corner of Fifth and Main where you can walk down there, and it's very safe and it's open, and it's open to the public. You have places where, um, you have no access. Or if you look where, uh, Public Works and Community Development is, you go down there and you look at the sidewalk and the beams that were originally put in are starting to rust. I probably wouldn't walk on them. So, I mean, those things all need to be determined and, you know, where we're going to go with them in the future.
Okay.
The, uh, last question would be then, if we were to talk about potentially URA money being involved with a rebuild of Main, so there is a, there is a timeframe that we'd have to possibly move this project up in front of other projects because of the, uh, of the expiration date of their renewal district.
That could be true, but I would like to offer the idea that if we were going to even apply for state funding of the road, the state's about five years out. And because of the size of the project, which may have been reduced from that original fourteen million because of the FEMA work and the, um, replacement of D Street associated with the FEMA work and portions of Ninth, um, that would be one part of a very complex funding piece. But we can't, I mean, this is one of the parts that we have to do first before we have a project to apply for funding. And so the, you know, the state's always just further out and further out and further out.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Randall.
I appreciate Counsel Blakey's, uh, offer of the money, but I do support the, uh, checking that, having the money set aside for checking all these underground tunnels and stuff like that, that they need to get done before any other plans are made.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to withdraw my amendment.
Okay. So that amendment's withdrawn. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Further discussion? Counsel Collins?
Are we, are we still discussing the last?
No, we're done with the last one.
Okay.
So this, this will now be amendment two.
Okay, feeling a little left out with the amendment process here. Um, I would like to make a motion that, uh, with our budget, we remove the, the council contingency that we placed last week of seventy-two thousand dollars. I would like to additionally add that we delay the start of our attorney position for four months. That we also delay the start of our library supervisor position for four months. Uh, I would like to see us add the PIO and ADA position back to the budget, but also delay that start for four months. Uh, and add the rec specialist back to the budget and delay that start by four months.
And I can talk about the numbers if I can get a second to that motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. So before we get into discussion, perhaps you could, uh, repeat that. Oh. Give a handout. Thank you, sir. You could align the numbers up in a column so I could add easier.
Beginning Excel.
Hold tool up there.
I was trying to get this one right here. Okay. So everybody's looking at these numbers. Did we get one up to Mr. Bennett? Okay, thank you. So, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Collins?
Uh, with what I have, uh, proposed here for an amendment, it would actually have, at least initially with the removing the contingency and, um, the start dates of the attorney and the library supervisor position actually is a savings to our budget of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, adding the ADA position and the rec specialist with the delayed start um, is an expense of, of just over seventy-nine thousand dollars with a, a total budget savings of um, just under twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is actually a reduction to our budget overall this year. And looking at the budget, I feel with that ADA position and the PIO is, is pretty important to our city. Uh, I think if we delay the start, it allows our city staff some, some time and opportunity to better define that position so that we can actually get started on that plan rather than, uh, delaying it for another year or potentially even longer, uh, meeting some of the federal requirements for the ADA. As well as, I think, uh, helping to promote our city and what's happening within our city with the, the public information position. Uh, it does mean tightening of some belts for just a little bit longer. Um, and I definitely appreciate that, but hopefully city staff can, can, uh, see the value in that. It does affect future budget cycles as these are not, these are ongoing costs. I understand that as well. But I do think that we have some costs in the future that will, some expenses that will come back that, uh, will become available to help, help us maintain our budget, including paying off the library, paying off the fire station in a few years. Uh, we have some, some retirement accounts that are coming, uh, due as well. Uh, and then we also, I believe, have, have a large number of, uh, city employees that are, are at or approaching their retirement age that, uh, will allow us to hire positions at lower than what they're currently at because of their long time service to the city. I think this, this is, uh, this kind of, this allows us to balance the budget, allows us to meet the needs and, and service our, our community better. Uh, I've heard a lot of stories of, of how stretched thin we are in certain areas, and I'd like to see us cover those. But I'd like to see us stay fiscally sound at the same time, so hopefully this is something that, uh, the council would consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? Counsel Maldonado?
Counsel Collins. Would you be opposed to allowing me to amend the amendment and putting that twenty-eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars into the fire station?
No. I do not oppose that, no.
Okay, so how should we go about this? Should I amend the amendment? All right, I would like to amend the amendment, Mr. Mayor, to put that twenty-eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars in the savings from Counsel Collins' amendment to the fire station.
Okay, are we clear on that? Do we have a second?
In essence, Mayor, this is a, what's known as a friendly amendment. So if the maker and the second both agree, we can, you can simply amend it as, as requested.
So this, back, the twenty-eight nine forty, back to the fire station?
Can the secondaire? Can the secondaire approve his own amendment? His friendly amendment?
That's a good question.
If not, I would second it.
Okay. So we're all clear on that? Well, I'm certainly, actually, I'm not opposed to Counsel Collins' amendment. Do we have any other discussion? Counsel Blakey?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Bennett, uh, just an explanation so that maybe all the city councilors understand and anybody who's listening and watching to make sure that we, when somebody retires, and I'll just use some hypothetical numbers, but a, a rec specialist, a recreation person who retires next summer, who's a long-term employee, and I'm going to pull a number out of the hat here, and say that individual is making sixty-five thousand dollars a year. I'm just pulling a number out of the hat. Hopefully it's more. Okay, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. If we go to fill that position, obviously we would fill it with most likely an entry level or somewhere near an entry level salary. So the salary's going to be not half, but something, something equivalent to less.
That's our policy, yes.
That's our policy. But the savings, the savings between the hire, the new hire, and what we are paying for the old person, that money still stays in the budget unless we request it to be pulled back out. That savings goes into general fund. That's the mechanism?
If it's a general fund position, yes, it goes into the general fund reserve.
And now, starting next year, recreation will be in, under general fu, will be in general fund?
Yes, it will be.
Prior to that, it wasn't.
It was an enterprise fund, much like the water and wastewater funds.
Yeah. So having, so does the council have the prerogative to say, "We don't want that money to flow back into general funds, and we want it to be a reduction against the budget"?
You always have that option. By, the exact mechanism, I guess, would, would kind of depend on what it is you wanted to do or what you wanted to accomplish. If you're talking about, I assume what you're talking about is, um, a zero percent budget and then further reducing that by a certain amount of money?
I, I'm trying to say is, what we're doing is we're bringing in new staff that we do got to pay for in the future.
Right.
We know we have long-term employees who are retiring. I would like to be able to believe that somewhere those long-term, the savings from those long-term employees
Yes.
could then be used as an offset against what we're creating this year. But if we're just carrying it over into the general fund, general budget, to go into our ninety-day reserve or build up our, there's no, there's, there's, we like to think that we got future cost savings, but in reality, we are not having. We're not creating any future cost savings.
Well, actually, you, you are because the more money you put into the Well, actually, you are, because the more money you put into the reserve, the greater it reduces the pressure on the council for any need to increase property taxes. So, in other words, if you have money in your reserve to pay for the needs of the city, then you don't need to raise property taxes.
An example of that is what we did this year.
That's correct.
Taking 15 days out.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to add one philosophical point with Mr. Blakey's question as well. Because of our planning process, oftentimes, we are aware when those retirements occur. Sometimes, you're not quite aware, or it happens or is announced during the fiscal year or after the budget, along the lines of your question and Mr. Bennett's answer. However, just as many times, if not more often, we know it in advance, and so we plan for that ahead of time. So, we'll plan for that savings. So, translation, the base budget that we present will capture a lot of that as well. Again, unless we hear about an announcement after the budget's approved or during the fiscal year. So, again, we already try to take into account many of those positions. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add one more thing, because I think it's along the lines of the fire station. With the adjustment we made last week with our spreadsheet, we are now down to, and again, it makes some assumptions, that we have 3% taxes in the next two years or equal revenue, but the balance short on the fire station was down to $58,000 at the end of fiscal year '18. So, the savings of '16, '17, and '18, we're just almost there with what you did last week.
And if we add this 29, roughly 29 to the 426, we're at 455.
Which really ripples to, you really, you pay for it. Yeah, you'll pay for it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not opposed to the general idea of delaying the start of some of these positions. However, I am opposed with just adding these other positions back into the budget. For example, the PIO and the recreation specialists. You know, we set the 72,000 aside in contingency so that we could discuss this in a future work session. You know, we don't even know for sure if that's going to be the exact number that we're going to use. And I'd prefer, if we were going to make an amendment like this, that, you know, $412,000 is quite a bit of money for the fire station. I don't think, you know, we've got a lot of time before we can get that built. I'd rather see a decrease in taxes, you know, with, I mean, we're going after, you know, $900,000 in reserves, $700,000 out of Percy, we're well over $1 million. You know, it's essentially a stealth tax, and I think that we're pushing up against the ceiling here by trying to take on more than we can chew and encumbering future councils by adding all these roles that aren't necessarily needed.
Okay. Well, if we delay, I mean, I think that the intent, if I'm not mistaken, on the PIO and slash ADA, or however that was going to come out, we're going to be discussing it at our September 14 workshop to define that, so that was the underlying reason to keep the 72 in the budget. What Counsel Collins here is because we recognize that we're going to, we need to do something, so we kept that 72 in there. What Counsel Collins is proposing here is, so, that gives us four months, roughly, four months, three months, to figure that position out, but by starting at January 1st, so you're knocking 25% off that, that's where, I'm sure you came up with the 48.
February 1st.
240. February 1st, okay, so, pushing it back four months, that's a 30% savings there. I, you know, whether it's included in this or it's under the council contingency, I, to me, that kind of makes sense a little bit. Right there's, you know, 30, 24, 24,000 right there off the top, so. I could still support this. Further discussion? Counsel Blakey?
Just a question back to Mr. Bennett. If it was in contingency, if we had left the money in contingency, we basically say we support the position, but we want time to think about it and formulate it. Versus now, if we approve this amendment and we put it back into the budget, are we under any obligation to hire on January 1st?
No.
No. So, in other words, it's contingency, I don't want to say, either way, we have the flexibility, we have the flexibility, if we keep it in contingency, to hire on November 1st if we want.
I understand Counsel Collins' intent, but if you leave the money, the amount that you've reduced, and you just leave it in the contingency, it accomplishes the exact same thing. You'll still have that three or four months to review it, to come up with exactly how you want to use it, and, you know, I think it works out either way.
So, if we, if the PIO slash ADA slash whatever else it may be, if it isn't till February or March or April, we haven't violated any kind of, nothing.
No, all you've done is allocated the funds so that if you decide to go ahead and hire the position, the funds are there.
Right. So, either way, we've been setting the money away. Either way, we're setting the money aside.
That's correct.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Okay, then, I guess all those in favor of Counsel Collins' amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Show of hands, ayes? Nays? Okay, motion carries, five, two. Any other proposed amendments? Counsel Daniel?
I move we strike the 1% COLA for the non-representatives from 1% to 0.5%.
Second. Care for me to explain?
Certainly. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
So, for those watching at home and for those in the audience that aren't city employees, we have what we call a salary matrix made up of these step increases. So, if you started working for the city this year, let's say you started on position A, and you're on step one, let's say you started at 30,000. Next year, if you passed your review, you'd go to step two, and you'd get an increase. So, let's say 3% or 3.5% or 4%, whatever that percentage is, and then the next year, you'd go to 3%, the next year, you'd go to 4%. Well, just recently, we changed those steps to, I guess, accommodate the changes in salaries around the state, around the area. So, now, this year, the step that a lot of the employees are going to go up is going to be actually a lot higher than it was before. And the COLAs, the cost of living increases typically are based on the CPI. This year, the CPI is in the negative. There's no need to even do the COLA in the first place. I personally would rather have it at zero, but I'm trying to compromise and at least just have a 0.5%. That way, the employees get something. You know, they're getting this massive step increase, a lot of them, not all of them. They're getting this COLA, which isn't even reflective of the CPI. In addition, we're still paying 100%, 100% of the employees' healthcare premium. That's massive. That's the COLA right there. That's the super benefit that you get for working for the city. So, I don't think the COLA's needed. I think a 0.5% is reasonable. According to Mr. Bennett and Dan Marsh, the 0.5% is approximately $35,000.
1% was about 70?
30 to 35,000, I think. Yeah, total.
Ballpark, 1% was about 70?
Yeah, about.
70 and change?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's only for the non-representatives. Because that means those employees that are not members of a collective bargaining agency like the police department, the fire department, and the technical employees of the SEIU who work in public works and parks.
How many employees would that be? How many employees would this amendment affect?
About half.
Out of the total number of employees?
So, that would be about 30%? Yeah, about 30% of the employees.
About 95.
Maybe about 30%.
And the remainder of the, the remainder of the employees are covered by union contracts?
They are, yes.
Which have causes like this in there?
They do.
What would your feeling on morale for the employees if this was to go through?
Well, I think it's clear that, well, what we've been trying to do over the last three or four years is to get all the employees on the same page so that both the non-represented employees and the employees that are represented by collective bargaining groups are being treated the same. So, that's the program that we've tried to do. We've been doing that for about the last three years now to get them, you know, basically even-steven. So, would the non-represented employees feel like they were being treated unfairly? They probably would. I just, you know, my personal opinion is, I don't think you should do something just because you can do something. There needs to be a reason to do it, and in my opinion, there's no reason to do this.
Counsel Daniel?
That's ridiculous, Mr. Bennett. Absolutely ridiculous. The reason is payroll is the biggest cost for any enterprise. Payroll, especially with the city of Lewiston, with, once you factor in the benefits, it's massive. That's the reason. This would actually provide savings. We base the COLAs year after year on the CPI. The CPI this year is in the negative. There's no need to even give more than zero. I mean, zero should be what it's based on. Hold on, no. If the CPI was 2% or 3% right now, we'd be hearing about how we really need to give these employees at least a CPI or as close as we can. But since it's in the negative, we're trying to sneak in this 1%. It makes no sense to me, especially since we reevaluated the step increases.
Well, you know, the only reason that the CPI is in the negative is because of gasoline prices. The actual cost of all other goods and services, food, housing, has, is in the 2% to 2.5% annual inflationary range. So, you're right, technically, it's a negative this year because gas prices dropped so far last year, but you couldn't prove it by Idaho, could you? Because our gas prices are some of the highest in the nation.
Well, that's not, we're going to be basing the COLAs off in the future. If it's the other way around, we'll have a staff member saying the same thing, only in reverse, to justify the increase.
Well, I'll go a little limmer, too, because I've had comments from quite a few folks, you know, why are we getting raises when, you know, basically, the CPI is flat? And, you know, unfortunately, they are non-represented, but that's a career path they've chosen, some of the representative employees. And again, for whatever reason, and I've had a problem with this in the past, too, that the floor on some of these negotiated contracts we've had with some of our represented unions, there's always been a floor of like a minimum. They're always going to get a minimum 1% and a max, say, of 2.5 or 3 or whatever it is. We just did that with the fire union, you know, as far as setting the floor, but, so even if it was like we had about, well, I'm trying to think who was on the council, three, four years ago?
Three years ago.
And the CPI was a negative number, but the floor was set that it was, that, I think, I don't know if it was fire, it doesn't matter, it was one of the unions, they still got a 2% raise. And to me, some of that kind of stuff doesn't make sense. I mean, the private sector doesn't operate on that premise that I'm aware of. So, I'm not opposed to it, still a raise, 0.5% still raised, is going to cover a little bit of the bump in their insurance premium that they're having to pay for the families and stuff like that, but I think the city has treated their employees rather well from a pay scale standpoint. I know our cost of living, when we did our salary surveys years ago, we did, I don't know how many salary surveys we've done since I've been on the council, but, you know, comparing ourselves to places like Richland, Kennewick, Coeur d'Alene, places where the cost of living is far higher than it is here in Lewiston, Idaho, and using that as a benchmark to establish the baseline for salaries and stuff, to me, always, it struck me as odd. So, I'm not opposed to the amendment, but Counsel Protown?
Mr. Mayor, I completely agree. We need to, you know, when we're looking at COLAs, and, I mean, we're talking about giving a cost of living increase, we're talking about giving a step increase, and then on top of that, with rising healthcare costs, we're paying 100% premiums for all of our employees. I mean, somewhere, you've got to draw the line. And if I were to draw the line, I'd prefer to bring it down to zero, but I'm in favor of bringing it back 0.5%. I think that's reasonable. I don't think that, I don't know anyone in the private sector who gets a raise, a cost of living increase, and all their healthcare paid for.
Silicon Valley, man.
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
This isn't California.
Further discussion? Counsel Blakey?
I'm really uncomfortable picking on the 90 employees who, it's 90, right?
99.
99 employees who are non-representative. To me, that appears to be an easy target. I suppose if we approve this, starting next week, those 99 might be seeking to be involved with a union. And I suppose if I was that union that represents the technology people, they might reach out and want to start covering those additional employees, and those additional employees might vote to do that. And I suppose that's up to them. To say that they chose this career path, I have a hard choice of that. What I see is long-term, I see employees who've been here a long time, and yes, the city of Lewiston is a good place to work. We got a letter today from Mr. Mc, how do you say his last name?
Jim McCalway.
Jim McCalway, retiring. You know, 40 years at the city of Lewiston. That's 40 years of knowledge, 40 years of working hard, 40 years, and he had nothing but positive things to say about the folks in the city, the employees of the city of Lewiston. I think this is a slap in the face. I think cutting him a percent or a half is a slap in the employees' face, the ones that don't have an opportunity to negotiate. They don't have an opportunity. If they had an opportunity to negotiate, I'd be all for probably supporting this, but they don't. And until there's a mechanism for them to, outside of them going to their, relying on what their supervisor thinks of them, no, I can't support this. I think there are some other things as a city that we can take a look at. Healthcare keeps coming up, and I agree that we continue to look at that, and maybe we need to start looking at a system where the employees start sharing some of the costs of that. And I would probably be in favor of that, reviewing that going forward.
Counsel Daniel?
This isn't picking on those employees. This is picking on this council, the previous councils for years that set up this bad policy of giving COLAs on top of all the other increases that we do, not to mention, you have to start somewhere. If you're concerned about payroll, you have to start somewhere. The reality is, you can't start at the unions, because the unions will always look and say, "Well, hey, the non-reps are getting this, we have to at least get that." That's how that process will always work. You have to start out what you can. In this case, 99 employees, we're just reducing it down to 0.5%, it's still well above the CPI. I'm still in support of this.
Counsel Randle?
I, for a long time, have said that our union contracts have been excessive, and I agree with Counsel Clinton that the 0.5% is not outrageous, especially if it's in, if it's at zero or in the negative as far as CPI. And as far as I'm concerned, anytime that you put a CPI addition into your calculation for wages or whatever, it should always start at zero, never at a floor of 1%, 2% or whatever. It should always start at zero. So, that if it, and the usual reason that it's thrown in is because the inflation rate has jumped up to something like 8% or some wild number like that, like it did back in the 70s, late 70s, when the inflation just went ballistic, and people start to panic that they're going to lose any purchasing power for their home or whatever. And so, that's usually a knee-jerk reaction on that. And so, union contracts, generally, there's a lot of them that they flat, will give you a pay increase for the year. You sign a contract for three or four years, and you may end up with only two years you get an increase, things like that. So, yes, I very much agree with Counsel Daniel's amendment on that. So, yes, I very much agree with Counselor Daniel's amendment on that.
Counselor Collins.
Mr. Bennett, Mr. Marsh, I know Counselor Daniel referred to additional increases. Do we have a general idea of how much that as a total comes out? I mean, for an employee that's here for five years, 10 years, if we've got the COLA plus the CIP plus whatever else? I'm not familiar with everything else that might be added to an employee's salary for a wage increase.
Well, it depends on how many years you've worked for the city, for one thing. If you've worked for the city, for example, for more than 10 years, the step increase is approximately 1%. It's, and then prior to that, it ranges anywhere from generally 2% to 3% for the longevity step increase that Counselor Daniel's talking about.
So, the longer you're here, after 10, it's approximately 1 potentially, and then after that, it may be more than, more than that if you've been here 12 years, 16.
Nope.
Opposite.
No, it's the opposite.
It's deeper as you're younger.
Right, right. And as you get, right, it caps, and then eventually you get down to, if you've been here 15 years or more, you receive no further increases. That's where it caps out.
But we have other things like VIBA that come into play as well. It is, but...
The VIBA program is a post, is a medical benefit that is an incentive to employees who do not use sick leave. Yes, that's a different program.
But it's still part of the, well, I'm making my point.
It's still part of the benefit package.
It is, yes. Just like vacation is. The vacation benefit.
And what is the savings, by going down to half percent, what is that, a savings number?
Oh, about $30,000 to $35,000 to the general fund.
I can't believe we're discussing this over $30,000. I understand the importance of starting somewhere. I do understand the importance of it. And maybe this is where we make the stand, but I guess if we really had, if we really had the nerve, we'd make the stand at the unions, start there. Really negotiate hard, starting next year when we have a contract level. Instead of going at a group of people that really can't defend themselves right now, I would say start with next year's negotiations, and I think next year, we start with tech, the tech folks?
That's correct.
Okay? If we want to make a cut, there's where we start, right there, and we draw a line in the sand there. And start there, and go to the next one, the next one, and see if we have the nerve to do, see if we have the nerve to stand behind what we talk about.
I guess I would offer this, Mr. Marsh, what's the increase in the health insurance, roughly, percentage-wise this year?
Percentage-wise, it's 8% increase.
For the dependent?
It's both to the city, who pays on behalf of the employees, and to the employees who pay for their dependents. Yeah, so 8%.
Okay. So, we're picking up an extra 8%.
Correct.
8% of insurance costs or 8% of their total salary cost?
8% of insurance cost. Down from about 25%. I had to negotiate it down.
Which is commendable.
Mr. Mayor.
Pro temp.
You know, Counselor Blakely keeps talking about pay cuts. Well, we're not really discussing a pay cut. We're discussing cutting a proposed increase. You know, the strength of the dollar since last year has gone from 70 on the index to 95, 100. The price of oil's down $37 a barrel. I mean, I don't see any reason, you know, if it was the other way around, if oil was $150 a barrel and the dollar was at 60, we'd be clamoring for, you know, the max amount of COLA possible. And we're just talking about coming down half a percent from a proposed increase. The employees are still going to get a half a percent increase under this amendment. I think it's fair and reasonable.
Counselor Blakely.
I'd rather take a path that Michael Lorenz talks about all the time. Find a saving somewhere within the budget. And, you know, his mantra is cut out employee travel or $200 a month for cars, or, I'm not saying that's the target, but that may be an area that we look at instead.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randle.
Call for question.
Okay. Counselor Randle has asked to call for the question. So, all those in favor of Counselor Daniel's amendment to a half a percent COLA? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Show of hands. Ayes. Nays. Yeah, that carries four to three. So, further discussion?
Call for question.
Well, we voted on that.
Oh, I mean, for the vote to read.
You're calling question?
Well, if nobody else has, I'm sorry.
Well, I have one thing. Mr. Mayor, on the last page...
Pro temp. Are you making amendment?
Possibly.
Okay.
On the last page of the Citizens Guide to the Budget, page 50, I just had some questions about the vehicle replacement program. I noticed there's a fire pumper fire truck on there for $425,000. There's a couple pickups for the Parks Department. Could we get a justification for all of those vehicle purchases? Is there any way that those vehicles, could we get by with just one pickup for Parks? Or...
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, we have a fleet replacement program that's been in place for 30, 40 years, and each year, each vehicle gets analyzed for its usefulness and useful life as compared to what the book says and how is it really running. Most times, in fact, generally, most times, the vehicles actually last much longer than it says to replace them per books. Occasionally, you get a lemon, and that doesn't happen, and you have to turn that over quicker. In this case, these vehicles would not be in front of you if we didn't feel like they needed to be replaced. They went, in most cases, well beyond their life. The repair costs are now exceeding or becoming a negative cost benefit to the city. And Chief Michael Bus can probably address the fire pumper, but I think by the time we replace this, we'll be maybe three years over, two to three years over the replacement period. The last time we looked at the numbers, if we were to replace all the vehicles as per the books, as what's scheduled, we'd have $3 million to replace. But we don't do that. Again, we stretch it as long as we can. Not to say that oftentimes, maybe a police car, you might be able to get an extra year out of, you know, six months, that sort of thing, but...
I seem to remember Chief DeYoung put off the pump truck replacement, I don't know if it was last year or the year before.
I think it was the year before.
It was the year before.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm asking if, you know, since we're dipping so much into reserves, is it possible that we could stretch the life of these, some of these vehicles out a little bit longer, and if one of them dies, then we could just dip into reserves as, in an emergency basis, and get it replaced right away?
My answer to that, Mr. Mayor, is that the fleet has its own separate reserves, so it's not, it's separate from the general fund. So, those are not commingled, and we keep a modest amount of reserves, but not enough to certainly pick up a fire engine if we were decided not to fund it. So, it's its own separate reserves, but not to the extent that we could not budget for it, not fund it, and then get into next spring and need it, and have to come up with the funds, short of a transfer from the general fund, which, of course, we can't do. So...
So, fleet maintenance is not under the general fund?
No, it is not. No.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randle.
Could we have the fire chief come up and explain why he wants the fire engine?
Certainly. Chief Michael Bus? Your presence is requested. I will, while I'm waiting for the chief, I will say that our grounds superintendent for Parks and Rec has been relegated to driving a recycled minivan from community development, I believe.
We do that a lot.
So, we probably should have a pickup truck. Just saying. Chief?
Yes, sir. What was the question?
Well, just wanted you to explain why we're getting a new, asking for a new fire truck.
Currently, the process that's been in place is about every 20 years is a recommended replacement of a fire engine. That is pretty much a standard out there. But due to be, because this engine has been well taken care of in our fleet, we've actually pushed this out. This engine is actually closer to 24 years old and will probably be close to 25 by the time we get through the process of writing a spec, going to bid, and then having the engine built. And you are correct, Mr. Mayor. Chief DeYoung has put this off a couple of years ago, and we continue to do that. So, you know, we have been able to push off because our fleet is so well-maintained, and so we do tend to push those years. And we've done that with other things in the fire department. But this engine, like I said, is about 24 years at this point right now.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
These engines on the replacement, does it have any bearing on the overall rating of a fire department by the state of Idaho?
Well, obviously, if one of these engines were to go down and we did not have that in our reserve, yes, that would have an impact come survey and rating time because of our backup capabilities and our response. Obviously, that does have a direct impact on our survey and rating by the insurance bureau.
Thank you.
What's the resale value of a 24-year-old fire engine?
Because the condition is pretty good, considering some of the smaller volunteer agencies out there, this will probably gather about $10,000 to $20,000 in the open bid. And I believe the last one that we had, it was probably right in around the 15 to 20. But we do have departments that do look because they are well-maintained, but small communities like where I grew up, which actually bought two of our last ones because it was such a deal for them compared to, you know, a fire department that has a $5,000 budget. So, they do look to these engines for replacement.
There isn't much of a resale.
No.
And that 10 or 15, is that applied to the 425?
Well, that money, I believe, goes back into the fleet reserve, I believe is how that works.
Mr. Mayor, how much is in the fleet reserve?
Approximately $350,000. And that's important too, Mr. Mayor, because that allows us to keep the rates that we charge back to the departments, keep those modest. In fact, I think maybe five of the last six years, we have not increased what we charge back to collect from the departments because we have the reserve.
Did we have to tap those reserves when our ambulances were damaged, when that car crashed into, crashed into the fire station and there was some damage? Was that a time where we had to tap the reserves to cover repairs and stuff?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we had enough in that particular case in our normal operating expenses, but there was some money that needed to be transferred within, I say operating, within the fleet operating.
Right, right.
There's operation place for repair maintenance, and there's capital. We did file an insurance claim, but to date, no questions.
So, that's why we have money for a rainy day.
Imagine that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Little further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Pro temp.
So presumably, it looks like we've got 350K in reserves. We could cover everything on here except for the pumper. Is that correct? In other words, if we removed all these vehicles from the list except for the pumper, we could still get by until one of those vehicles died, and then we could just dip into reserves and cover it?
Mr. Mayor, the same concept with the general fund holds with this fund or any other fund. You could certainly drain your reserves. I wouldn't advise that. In fact, I'd recommend strongly against that because it does help us from year to year. It helps the planning process. Last week, Counselor Blakely asked what's been my number one reason why you think we've been successful financially and because of planning? So, I wouldn't recommend that, but you could certainly take everything out of savings and buy those vehicles.
These dollar amounts that we're talking about here, this is general fund dollars?
No, these are fleet maintenance dollars. So, we try to keep a modest, a modest reserve.
What we're actually voting on right now is the general fund, what our budget is for the general fund.
Mr. Mayor, clarification. You'll ultimately be voting on the entire citywide budget of approximately 60 million?
Coming up next.
Yes. But the adjustments or the amendments that have been made have been focused on the general fund, which is, which of course is the biggest fund.
I guess my point is, not all of those vehicles would die at once, so it's not like our reserves, our fleet maintenance reserves would be depleted overnight. It would be chipping it away, chipping away at it rather than paying for it all upfront. Is that correct?
Well, it'd be correct, but this isn't the proper time. This would actually come under our next ordinance that we'll be reading. Keep track of my papers here.
Okay, I'll save my...
Which actually would be coming under ordinance 4641.
This is part of this.
This is part of this one. Sorry, my mistake. Thank you. Okay. Well, I think, personally, I think it's wise to replace vehicles as they roll in and out and get what you can out of them. I don't have a problem with the, with the replacement schedule we have right here. I think the staff's done good, and they've pushed things back, and they've done it repeatedly for years when we've asked them. So, especially when times were really tight back in the 2008, 2009 downturn, I know they all buckled up and were foregoing replacement of vehicles until times got better, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd propose an amendment to strike, we can keep all the police and all the fire vehicles in there for essential services, but I'd move to strike one of the Parks pickups and the traffic control vehicle.
Second. Okay, we have motion and second. Discussion? Counselor Blakely.
Why?
Because, as I stated earlier, we don't need to pay for all the vehicles to be replaced right now. They're not all going to die overnight. We've got 350,000 in fleet maintenance reserves that we could dip into at any point in time if any of these vehicles breaks. We're spending $425,000 on the pumper. That's our biggest, most imminent threat, so I don't see any reason why our fleet maintenance reserves wouldn't be able to cover those two if it came up. I think it would result in a cost savings to the taxpayers.
So, basically, we're talking about 63,000. Is that correct? Traffic control and one Parks? Mm-hmm. Well, I think this is one of those budget items that's set there for a specific reason so that we're not scrambling to replace vehicles. So, I, at this point, I just don't know that I can support that. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randle.
One of the other things, the reason that you have a reserve like that, to have a buffer for, I understand we probably have some insurance, but you need to buy something right away, you have to have cash on hand. If you have a collision, God forbid, with a police car or, and as has happened, fire trucks. And so, they put out a commission. You need that buffer right there so that you can take care of that right away. Because even though we're replacing these vehicles, it doesn't mean that we try to probably, try to get as little out-of-service gap as possible so that we always have, with all those vehicles at our beck and call, whereas, and we're probably running with the minimum number as it is right now as far as total vehicles for each department. So, it isn't like we've got three or four spares for each department. So, it's important that we keep that reserve intact, and if not, if nothing else, probably raise it if we can. And so, I go along with the current request for the vehicles.
Counselor Blakely.
You know, my thinking is, this is not one of these easy targets again. I use the word picking on again, and I think we are. Why do we, why do we put this in the, in the report in such a format where we disclose this, but we don't say what the... the report in such a format where we disclose this, but we don't say what the information technology department's going to buy and, you know, 19 new hard frames and 19 hardware or whatever, you know, new computers. We don't, we don't list their line items. We don't list other departments' big purchases. Is it because it's based on numbers? Or is this just historically, you've always put this in the report and it's always historically there? What is the reason why that's items here, and we don't see a breakdown of other big purchases?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Blakey, actually, we do have an entire section on capital beginning on page 46, and it does outline all the major capital items by fund. With respect to information technology.
Pick it on them.
Right. It's, it's, it's a brand-new fledgling fund, and, and it's more of a replacement. We're replacing monitors and PCs and, and servers and what have you. And we can certainly add that. So some of it, yes, is probably history that we've included. But in terms of the big picture, the capital, the major capital items are disclosed on page 46 through 50. And you can see on page 49 where we actually graph, and you can see that next year's, well, it's the third lowest capital in the last 10 years.
But we have other departments that are making purchases of 25, 35, $75,000 that aren't broken out in our budget. They're just in the numbers.
No, we have a capital replacement policy of 25,000 and at least three years or more. Otherwise, it gets to this particular section.
Okay.
But if we're replacing photocopiers and fax machines, no, those, those are in the reports. Those are in the, in the, buried in the, in the operating pieces, if you will.
Right, right.
So I might just add, too, you know, we'd be happy to go in as deep as Council wish. And we do oftentimes in our work sessions, as Mr. Bennett mentioned, we started this in February, and we'd be happy to, during the work sessions, just dig down into it just as deep as you'd like. But anyway, I hope that answers your question on the capital.
It does. It just says, we put this in here, and this is, lightning always strikes this page, seems. Last two years, at least, I have it on the city council.
Probably interesting vehicles.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilor Collins?
I just have a general question. You kind of spiked my interest a little bit earlier when we were talking about the cost of living and the effect of gas on it. Within our budget, when we plan the budget, when gas prices change like that, which I would think within our city is a pretty tremendous amount of expenditure for all the vehicles we have and road and everything else, if we're saving a significant amount of money, how does that affect, or where does that money go within our general budget? Does it go back to reserves? Is it something we just hold on to? And in years when we, gas prices go up and we haven't planned for a gas increase, what, what do we do?
Each year, you know, it's, it's a bit of a guessing game as to what the fuel costs are going to be. We do an estimate of where we think the trending is for fuel prices. But to answer your question, if it comes in low, then those monies are returned to the fund that they were expended from. So if it's an enterprise fund or a special fund like fleet, that's where those monies would go. If these are general fund expenses, then they would be main part of the general fund reserve. Likewise, if it ends up being more than you budgeted for, those are the same areas that eventually those funds are going to have to pay for that out of those reserves.
And are those reported somewhere that we can see that at the end of a fiscal year where we can see gas savings, gas overrides, or whatever it might be?
We could do that. We don't normally, you know, set it up like that, but we have an end-of-the-year reconciliation of the budget, which shows each particular line item in each fund and each area, and whether it came in individually below or under budget estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
But we do have that.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Pro Tem Johnson's amendment to strike parks and traffic control vehicles, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Show of hands, ayes? Ayes? Okay, motion fails, 5-2. Okay, now back to ordinance 4640, as amended. We have any further discussion?
Call the vote.
Okay. Call for the question. This will be done by roll call vote. No?
We haven't read it.
Oh, we have to read. We never did read. Sorry. Caught up in the moment. Okay, to read, ordinance 4640 for the third time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4640 by title only suspending the rules as amended. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston to reterm the annual appropriation ordinance. Appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016. Providing for the filing of a copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State as required by law and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4640 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion by roll call vote to approve ordinance 4640 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded.
Councilor Maldonado.
Aye.
Councilor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Councilor Daniel.
Aye.
Councilor Collins.
Aye.
Councilor Randall.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Under ordinance 4641, per possible third reading and adoption, this is fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016 for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification of Nesspris County Commissioners in the amount of, is this going to be the correct amount?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Didn't we reduce it? We could do the, the half percent.
We did.
The call.
Mr. Mayor, if you recall, we've, when we've made adjustments, we have adjusted that through the firefighter retirement, which allows more money to the fire station. So that's how we have considered the last two amendments at a 0%. If you want to go negative and not roll those funds to the fire station, that's.
Wait a second.
The council can do that.
These, this number, 17306300 includes the savings from the fire department. That's part of the base from, from Percy. So this number would be minus the half percent.
Up to this point, the amendments that have been made have been simply changing one allocation to another allocation with the balance being then moved either, say, to the library or to the fire station. So it's come out even. In this particular case that you're mentioning, the half a percent, unless that is specifically proposed for that savings to go to the fire station, say, or the library, it would simply stay in the general fund reserve.
My, this, that, the half percent COLA comes out of property taxes. That would reduce the property tax levy.
Yes, we, we, we can, we can do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can figure out what the exact amount of that is.
Let's give or take 30, 35,000 or so.
And then deduct that. I'm not sure what it would be exactly.
The point was, up to this point in time, we've let the savings all offset the fire station challenge.
Right.
For example, last week, we're at 170,000. This week, we're 56,000. Sure. So that's the way we have adjusted these changes. But as Mr. Bennett says, if the council would rather have a negative tax levy or reduction, we're zero right now, we can sure do that.
It would be uniscule, but that's what it would in fact end up being.
Well, I think that that was the amendment, though, was, it was coming, it was taking off property taxes.
That was clear.
I think it was clear. I think.
Whatever the council wants to do.
That's fine. We'll just adjust that number accordingly. But I don't know what the exact amount. I couldn't tell you right at the moment what exact, exact dollar amount would be. Because we, I don't know that we have.
Well, I mean, if it's 30.
30, 30 to 35,000.
30 to 35 out of 1.7. I mean, it's, I guess it's the council's pleasure.
30,000.
Let me ask the city attorney.
Roll that.
Do you have any issue with the ordinance being adopted with a notation that the dollar amount be modified by the value of the half a percent that would be saved from the proposed increases to non-represented salaries?
No, Councilor Mr. Mayor, I think that's fine as long as you make that very clear when you're, do your motion to reduce that amount by the half a percent saved so that we don't have to wait until the 14th, since this needs to get done.
No, because we need to have this sent to the state. Mr. Mayor, why don't we just give you the number?
Okay.
So just to be clear, it's the half a percent on the wage adjustment for the non-rep, which equated to approximately 30, 35. So let's go on the highs. 35,000, okay? 35,000 reduced from the taxed certification is of 17306 would be $17,271,300. And in that way, it's, it's clear.
We may be a little over, but that'll be pretty much the same.
Is that the council's pleasure?
Yeah.
We'll clarify on that. Okay. So where are we at? So I need to read the new number. 17, okay. Providing for the tax certification of Nesspris County Commissioners in the amount of $17,271,300.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4641 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016 for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesspris County, Idaho in the amount of $17,271,300. Providing a certified copy of the annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesspris County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2015-2016 fiscal year and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4641 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4641 by title only suspending the rules by roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Councilor Maldonado.
Aye.
Councilor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Councilor Daniel.
Aye.
Councilor Collins.
Aye.
Councilor Randall.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. We have a budget. Moving on to ordinance 4637, per possible third reading and adoption, this is amending Lewiston City Code, Section 7.1, increasing and adding certain ambulance service fees. Entertain a motion to read for the third time, ordinance 4637. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilor Daniel.
I move that we strike the, the new proposed $200 fee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Oh, this is for the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, so discussion?
I don't think it's warranted. I think I, I think I made my points at the last meeting. I won't continue making the same ones.
Further discussion? Pro Tem.
I was a little frustrated last week by not being able to obtain any numbers from the private sector, that we've only been able to get numbers from the public sector. So I went out and did a little detective work, and I contacted a private sector company, and they were able to give me their rates. The lady was really nice, and I feel like, you know, given this new information, in order to get a more objective study, I feel like, you know, MSAB should probably be reviewing these numbers to see if we can come up with some true fairness on, on the numbers rather than just looking at the public sector. So I'll support Councilor Daniel's amendment to strike the, the 200 one, but I feel like we need some further discussion on this overall as well.
Okay. Councilor Maldonado.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm just curious what your no trans, or ALS no-transport numbers are on that sheet from that private sector company?
Specifically on the, the no-transport ALS, they said that this company doesn't actually provide that service. However, there's a whole lot of different numbers on here that would, would be applicable to the other fees. So I feel like it's worth looking into, not only from this company, but surely there are some other companies out there that would, would give up their numbers just like this one did, based out of Idaho, by the way.
Councilor Blakey.
Is this the main provider for the city of Boise's fire department?
I'm not sure if they're the main provider, but they are based out of Boise.
And I'm looking at their website, and it appears that they're a competitor, but not the provider, not, they don't replace the city of Boise's responsibilities.
Right, but there would still be a private sector competition that we could gauge our, our rates on.
There's the key. I wouldn't, you know, I guess our market isn't big enough that we can have private competition. I would always be in favor of private competition when it's available. In a city of, size to size of Boise, there's enough, there's enough care, enough issues that private, the private sector can issue, can function in and around the city's services in the city of Lewiston. It appears, at least no one's come here yet, that there isn't enough of a marketplace to justify a second provider.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Randall.
If I remember right, there was an outfit started by a former firefighter, Mr. Greenfield.
Yes.
And it didn't pan out like Councilor Blakey says. He just didn't have enough customers to make it worth his while. And so.
There's maybe a little different opinion on that from some people in this community, but he wasn't able to obtain the MSAB's blessing at the time either, which severely limited his ability to do any kind of transport. So, yes, he packed her up and left. I will go ahead and support this because I do think maybe MSAB could take a little longer look at it. And the reason I say that is a good friend of mine, and I've talked about her before. She, we sat on planning and zoning together for years. She just had a, a trip down to the hospital courtesy of Lewiston's finest, and she was very appreciative. They were very, a very big help to her and stuff like that. And she got her bill, and of course, after sorting it all out, she's owed the X amount of dollars. But her comment to me the other day was that people pay taxes in this town. They should get some services. That's part of the deal of being a taxpayer. You know, you pay taxes, you get a service. We've had people come up here and talk to us about, you know, what's next? Are we going to, you know, charge for a police visit to a, you know, house for a loud neighbor or whatever? But her comment was, $200, if you stick that on some of these people, they may be put in that position where they might not pick up the phone because they're worried about having a $200 bill that they may or may not be able to handle because they don't qualify for Medicare because they're not old enough. You know, I've just, that's a concern of mine. So at this time, I don't know that I'm ready to support enacting this, this fee at this time. I'm not saying I wouldn't down the road, but that's where I'm at, from somebody that actually uses the ambulance service, talking to me. So.
Councilor Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I, I met with the advisory board this last week, and I know that Mike Larson is here, the, the chair of that board. And I know that we talked, and I, and I know there, at least it's my understanding that there is some flexibility, and maybe we can go back and do some homework. But if Mr. Larson wouldn't mind giving us a little information as to, council's pleasure, as to where this group came from with those fees and kind of where we're at right now.
Mr. Larson?
I will also say that I'm somewhat loathe to go against recommendations from our, some of our advisory boards and stuff because these people aren't paid. They're volunteers. They put in a lot of time and effort to bring recommendations to the council. So I don't take that lightly, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Collins. The, I guess, a little bit of history of why the. The, I guess a little bit of history of why the, the MSAB board considered this situation and, and came to this conclusion. I think it's really important to clarify the, the type of situation that this is going to be. It's not going to be a situation where an ambulance is called and arrives at somebody's home, finds out they don't need to go to the hospital and then they get a two hundred dollar bill. This is specifically for those situations when ALS services are provided. Some of those situations may be certain types of calls that require medications and the person responds very well to the medication and then chooses not to then be transported to the emergency department. And, and in those situations, a service was provided, medications were provided and their costs are ready to the system. And this is merely a way of trying to recoup that cost in those situations. The intent that, that MSAB had and with much of the discussion we had, our intent was never, ever to quote unquote, stick the common person. We are merely looking at a way to recoup some of the, the money that could be billed to that person's insurance for those services. And so what we're, actually we're trying to do was to pick up the money sitting on the table from insurance companies, third-party payers that would pay this, this fee and then move that back into the funding, not necessarily bill the, the citizen who doesn't have the resources to, to pay for it. The other thing that, at the last MSAB meeting, which ended up being last Tuesday, we had quite a bit of discussion and Lewiston Fire is actually working or has a hardship clause in place to prevent that type of a, a situation. So if the response is to somebody who doesn't have insurance, there's no way to, to bill for this service, then it could be considered on a, a case-by-case basis with that hardship process and then not necessarily bill that person for something that they have no resources for. So our intent wasn't to create something new. Our intent was to be able to recoup costs that are there and billable to third-party payers, if that helps.
Okay. Questions? Counselor Blakey?
So would a, the frequent flyer who we provide no services for, ambulance shows up, they realize there's nothing wrong with this person, they don't get billed the two hundred dollars?
That would not be the intent because in my perception of what you just said, there was no advanced life support procedures, medications provided in that situation, but Travis would probably be, or Chief Michael Bus would be a better person to answer that.
I could understand, once the medical box gets open, we start billing because supplies are coming out. But there are the frequent flyers and under your explanation, it sounds like they would be exempt, right, just for clarification?
Counselor, you are correct. If they do not receive advanced paramedic life support skills, there would not be reference in the charge and there's nothing under the CMS, which is the Center for Medicare Services, that would allow any type of charge unless this council went and created one, which once again, over eighty percent of our volume are Medicare and Medicaid, we would not be able to receive anything for those that, those of our residents that use our service on a more frequent basis.
But an example where it would be used immediately, where the bill would come in, if I thought I was having heart palpitations, you put a hand, you put a cuff on me and Bob, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just your favorite television show's character died or whatever, there's nothing wrong with me. The moment that cuffs put onto my, onto my, my arm, has that become a billable then?
No. A billable under this would be having to start an IV, administer a medication, defibrillate your heart with a, with a manual defibrillator, not an AED. An AED is considered a BLS skill or if we were to stick a tube down your windpipe. So very evasive, or we decide to drill a, a needle into your bone so we can give you IV fluids. So it's a very evasive procedure that would allow us to charge this ALS service. And like I said, we're, the numbers we've used this year, there's forty-two calls that would classify. That's forty-two out of six thousand and ninety-three calls so far this year that would qualify for that.
Thank you.
Protem.
Is there any way that we could recoup some of these costs by getting a portion of, of the money from the receiving facility since we're transporting to whatever medical facility? Is there any way that they could chip in for a portion of the cost or provide some of the materials or medication?
Currently, they do help offset with some of the medications for those patients we transport and it is, it is a significant amount. The numbers I ran, that if we were to have to provide all of those supplies of those patients we transport would increase the operation supplies of the general fund and the fire department's budget by over forty thousand dollars. So we do get that currently today, Counselor, which is a great tool. There's always the avenues to go out to look at, at marketing or partnering with other providers. It's just whether they have the funds that they would be able to produce, but those are always things that we continue to look for and we'll continue to approach. But, so that currently they are providing us with those. Both of the facilities in the LC Valley do help offset some of those costs.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
Chief, on those institutions that help offset the costs and stuff, is that going to change when our hospital goes from a nonprofit to a profit?
It is unknown at this time. It could. It is something that I have anticipated, but until the process is done and seeing where that is, we will not know. But that is something that definitely in my long-range planning, I, we will look at and we will have those discussions once that were to take place.
Thank you.
Just, I'm in support of this amendment, ordinance resolution. What I don't like is what's wrong with our system. And it was just a comment that you made was because it's out there and because the insurance companies make it available, we go out and we should use those funds. That's nothing wrong with us, that's the system and that's one of the reasons why our medical care and medical expenses are so high and because it's there. And just a statement of the times and who we are.
Counselor Daniel?
I don't have any more questions if I have a statement I'll make at the end, but does anybody else have any more questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
I would probably support this resolu, this ordinance as is if there was a much larger call volume or if we had a few people that were using it, if, if only three people made up the entire forty-two calls, but it sounds like there might be a couple frequent flyers, but for the most part, these are forty-two separate calls. And, you know, I don't think that such a small number of calls warrants a whole new fee structure. Especially given who it's going to impact the most is usually the people that can't afford it.
Further discussion? So we're voting on the amendment, correct? Yes. Okay, all those in favor of Counselor Daniel's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Show of hands. Ayes? Nays? Okay, the motion carries four to three. So back to... Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
I'd like to amend that ordinance to, instead of having the two hundred dollar fee, having a hundred dollar fee. I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to take, what was it, section?
Section seven, one.
Well, it's not section, section one.
Fourteen.
Item fourteen from two hundred to one hundred.
Would be from zero to one hundred because we just...
From zero to one hundred since we just, thank you, Counselor. To make that fee one hundred dollars. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
I guess for the time being, yes. Counselor Collins?
I, I just wanted to point out one thing too as well and, and I don't know the exact numbers, but oftentimes with some of these calls, these are not just Lewiston taxpayers. Sometimes these are calls for people outside of Lewiston that are here visiting on the river, who knows what. So we are providing services using city of Lewiston taxes to, in some ways, take care of somebody who has not paid into our system in general.
Sure.
I'm sure that's a relatively small number, but it is still a number.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of Counselor Randall's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes? Nays? So that motion carries five to two. We clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve ordinance forty-six, thirty-seven as amended by rule call vote by title only suspending the rules.
I'm sorry, we haven't read it yet.
Oh, we haven't read it yet?
We've made a motion to...
Thank you. Once again, I got tangled up. Thank you. So we're to read. We already had a seven to zero motion to read. And then we had an amendment.
No, there, there was no vote.
There's no vote on the motion to read.
It was just discussion. Motion seconded and then discussion. So now the discussion's ended. The ordinance has been amended. Now it's time to read it as amended.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all those in favor of reading ordinance forty-six, thirty-seven for the third time, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five to two.
Approving the third reading ordinance forty-six, thirty-seven by title only suspending the rules as amended. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, section seven dash one, increasing and adding certain ambulance service fees and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilor's ordinance forty-six, thirty-seven's been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance forty-six, thirty-seven by title only suspending the rules by vol, rule call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Daniel?
I move that we divide the question and consider section one, number fourteen separate.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that one more time?
My motion was to divide the question and to consider section one, line fourteen, separate.
Thank you.
I guess I need a comment. You know, I, I support the rest of the ordinance and I'd like the opportunity to show my support. I think it's pretty clear, I'm not going to support that fee and I would be disappointed that if I didn't get to vote for at least most of the ordinance, there is that one section I just, I adamantly oppose. So I would appreciate the council's indulgence to allow me to divide the question.
Well, I would...
The motion's perfectly in order.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to think of, I mean, would it make more sense to just redo and vote to strike section fourteen and we can reconsider that at a future date? Line fourteen.
Well, that, that isn't what Counselor Daniel requested.
Yeah, he's wanting to split it out.
Yeah.
Okay, and you still want to consider it tonight then?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I think it's clear to the council, just what they want it.
We clear on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The ayes? Okay, five nays? Two? Okay, motion carries five to two. So we're back to...
So we have a rule call vote for, for section fourteen and then a rule call vote for fourteen.
Okay. We clear on that? Okay.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Daniel?
Nay.
Counselor Collins?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Oh, aye, sorry. I changed my vote before the rule call. Sorry.
I figured that's what you were going to do.
Counselor Randall?
Aye.
Okay, that carries seven to zero. So...
Now you do fourteen.
It's a separate section. Now, okay. So we're just voting on...
Section fourteen.
Section fourteen.
Correct.
By rule call.
By rule call. Okay, as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
One hundred dollars.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Nay.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Daniel?
Nay.
Counselor Collins?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Aye, yep.
Okay, and that carries five to two. Okay. Moving right along. Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash forty-six, and this is establishing rates, fees, and equity buy-in charges for water, wastewater, residential, and commercial mobile cart solid waste service and commercial container solid waste. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand and fifteen dash forty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Counselor Daniel?
I have about seven amendments it's probably going to take, find out. No, I'm just joking to it.
Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution two thousand and fifteen dash forty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, and item F, vouchers payable to Albertsons from seven thirty-one fifteen through eight thirteen fifteen, the amount of thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Six to zero to one.
Six, zero to one, thank you. And I'll turn this over to Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is vouchers payable to early birds apply from July thirty-first fifteen to August thirteen fifteen in the amount of twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to early birds apply.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero to one with Mayor Kleberg abstaining and I'll hand the mayor, the meeting back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Protem. I'll move on to unfinished and new business. The city council comments, do we have any this evening? Counselor Daniel?
Yes, it's election season. There is three seats up for reelection. I am not running for reelection, so that leaves one completely open seat. You can pick your packets up, I think, starting today through September fourth.
Yes.
And if you're interested, please call or visit City Hall.
Any other comments? Counselor Collins?
I just want to say thank you to the public for participation this last weekend in the mud run. The proceeds from that go to the Idaho Food Bank, which I would also like to say, I believe they're having their groundbreaking ceremony this week on Wednesday up near the Old Theater at ten AM. So let me see some people out there supporting that as well.
Counselor Maldonado?
The firefighters are going to be back in the street for the first time in three years doing, uh, fill the boot this year on Twenty-first Street, so good thing they're back out there. They had lost a lot of money to donate to the MDA and Jerry's Kids, so they'll be back out there on Saturday.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other council comments? I've got a couple. First up, I think we've all received a copy of this, but for the public, the United States Department of the Interior Bureau Reclamation, they are requesting public comments regarding the proposed Lewiston Orchards Project water exchange and title transfer. They're going to have a couple of public hearings. I'm sure that the press will have that in the newspaper. If you need a copy of this, I could certainly let you have it. September second from five till eight PM at the Williams Conference Center. For those of you that are not familiar with it, Jerry Clem's been instrumental in, he's a port commissioner, but he's also on the Chamber of Commerce, Natural Resources Board, a port commissioner, but he's also on the Chamber of Commerce Natural Resources Board, and he's pulled together quite a few different parties. It's a combination of the Lewiston Orchards Irrigation District, Bureau of Reclamation, city of Lewiston, Nespris County, Nespris Tribe, I know I'm leaving somebody out, but a collaborative effort, they drilled one well up in the orchards, attempted ripon so far, and the end goal being to replace the water coming out of the Craig Mountain watershed with a more reliable source of water from five wells. So it's got a big impact, it's going to have a big impact on, talk about budgetary impacts on people's wallets, when those of us that live in the orchards have to start paying the electric bill for those five wells, so we can water our lawn, that's going to be huge. So I would recommend anybody that's interested, lives in the orchards, to be aware of what's going on if you want to testify, I think it would be welcome. The other thing is, tonight, the end of the budget session, and I would like to thank everybody that participated, took the time to come down here, to thank us, to scold us, irate us, what have you. We've had three lively meetings, some of the better meetings than I think I've sat in on in a long time, and the course of, over the course of three meetings, we've had a total of 13, 14 amendments to the budget. But when it was all said and done, I think we were all in agreement. Maybe not everybody got what they wanted, but there was give and take all the way along, and I appreciate staff's time and effort. This process started back in February with our first, you know, budget roundtable session, and we'll have four months off before the next one, for those of us that are still around. So, that being said, again, I thank everybody for their participation. That's all I have. Mr. Bennett?
A few things. Of course, it's not lost on anyone who lives in the Lewis Clark Valley, that the smoke situation here has been really bad the last few days, in the very unhealthy to hazardous categories. The good news is there's some light at the end of the tunnel, that perhaps by the end of the week, we're going to start to see some easing of that smoke condition, and some weather changes. But in the interim, I would suggest if you want to keep abreast of what's happening, there's a, the state of Idaho has a website called idahosmokeblog.com, and they can give you all of the latest information about air quality advisories in our particular region, and the monitoring stations that we have set up here. Second, you can see the intersection is still under repair, or under construction at the intersection of Main Street and Ninth. That work continues, but I've been assured it will be all completed and done, and the road opened before hot August nights begins. So that project is in the last stages of being completed. And then lastly, I've been contacted by the Idaho National Guard, thanks to a communication from Counselor Randall, and from interim airport manager, Robin Turner. There's a program that they are sponsoring, where they're trying to dedicate part of their aircraft fleet, the A-10 Thunderbolts, to individual communities in Idaho, and they're coming to our airport in a month's time, and hope to be able to dedicate aircraft to both the city of Lewiston and the city of Moscow. So I've been corresponding with the staff, the officer staff there at the Air National Guard, and we'd expect to have a nice contingent here, a great ceremony, and it'll be an opportunity for folks to come out and see these great aircraft. And in addition, we will have the ability to do some personal artwork that will be put on the aircraft itself, that will in essence say the pride of Lewiston, and superimpose the state of Idaho with a portion of the city's logo to represent our specific identification. So I think that's exciting. It's going to be a lot of fun, it'll be very interesting to have that happen, so tentatively set for September 24th, at the Lewiston-Nespris County Regional Airport, but I'll confirm that as I get more information back from the Air National Guard. I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Marsh for just a minute, he, a few things he wanted to talk to you about with respect to the library.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I, too, I wanted to thank the council also for the many hours and a lot of hard work that you guys put in as well, along with our directors, and it's evident, you certainly care a tremendous amount about our city and our budgets, and a lot of research and hard work, and some good tough questions, so. But earlier this evening, I wanted to address the library and our citizens' comments, there were some questions came up about the inordinate amount, we may have paid for the current library building, and maybe the community or the foundation maybe should contribute more, but nevertheless, not to characterize what was said, but I just have the numbers I wanted to provide. First, we paid $595,000 for the library facility, historical building, of course, and nearest my calculation, that's about $13 per square foot. So I think that was a really sound decision, at least in terms of a price that the city paid. Second, on the first phase, the Library Foundation contributed $1,871,771 towards Phase 1, which was right at, within $15,000 of what the city paid. So there's, have been step for step with what the city has provided. We did receive another $451,000 in a couple miscellaneous fundings from the CDBG and HUD, a little bit of money from URA. And then, so now we've got the last phase, and the foundation has already indicated they're going to match, as council knows, the million that the city puts up with a million. So they'll be right at 50%. It'll, for the most part, be close to a 50-50% split relationship, slightly less with the other funds, but. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear, especially for the citizens at home. I know council is probably seeing these numbers, but I thought that was timely to respond.
I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Dr. Schweitzer and his wife for also contributing a big chunk of change towards the library when they came to town. $1 million. So. Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments? Just a comment, I guess we did receive a second application for the joint airport authority for the city-appointed seat. So the closing date on that is September 4th, correct?
Right, yeah, it'll be the Friday before Labor Day.
Okay. So if anybody else is interested, I anticipate we'll set up some interviews probably that following week, and try and have a member appointed before Mr. Martin steps down. Any other board of commission appointments? Work session agenda topics? None? Well, at this time, I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.